Okay, good evening and welcome to what will be first prior to the meeting will be a public hearing. And I'll read that Town of Eastlime Notice of Public Hearing, Eastlime Town Hall, 108 Pennsylvania Avenue, Niantic, Connecticut. Notice is hereby given of a public hearing to be held by the Eastlime Board of Selectmen on Wednesday, November 15th, 2023 at Eastlime Town Hall at 108 Pennsylvania Avenue in Niantic, Connecticut, beginning at 7:00 PM to receive comments regarding the following ordinance. Ordinance establishing Youth, Family and Human Services Commission for the Town of Eastlime. Said ordinance proposes a repeal of ordinance section 31-10 entitled Youth Services Commission and establishes a new commission entitled Youth, Family and Human Services Commission to act as advisory board to the Board of Selectmen and shall be responsible for providing outreach, community education and services to meet the needs of the youth in the towns of Eastlime, Salem and the families and individuals in the town of Eastlime from youth to senior citizens. Copies of the proposed ordinance were available for review in the Eastlime Town Clerk's Office and were on file on the Eastlime Town Hall website. Interested persons are invited to be heard, attend to be heard, date at Eastlime, Connecticut, this first day of November. Eastlime Board of Selectmen, and this was in the New London Day on the 3rd of November and posted on our website. Is there anyone that wishes to be heard regarding the ordinance? Anybody for public comments or public hearing? Pat. And we know your name, but if you could just give us your address, Pat?
Pat Larkin, 140 Kilgare Drive in Niantic. I've been a longtime member of the Youth Service Commission, trying to figure out today about 16 or 17 years. And I've been hoping to get more interest in the commission for years. It lingered. I'm fully supportive of the efforts being made to potentially create a new department. I think it's a long time coming. I do have one issue with it. I'm not sure if this is the time to say it or if I should wait till the selectmen meeting. I think voting to enact a new department tonight at this last meeting of this board would be wrong ethically because adding the new department is going to create new budget, new overhead and everything. And I think that the next Board of Selectmen should be the ones making the decision on this since they're going to be the ones, they're going to have to deal with the budget for the 2024, 25 year versus three of you guys that are here now adding on more cost to the town when you're all leaving after this meeting. Thank you. So I think, I think you should wait and let the new board enact it.
Thank you, Pat. Anyone else wish to be heard on the issue of the public hearing?
Hi, everyone. My name is Candace Carlson. I live at 46 Riverview Road. I was coming in support tonight. I had no plans of speaking until Pat came up to say what he had said. I think that whether or not you were to pass it tonight or if it were to move on to the new board, being that I would be one of the new board members, I would be certainly in support of it. I'm not too sure how much detail Pat's gone into in regards to the budget, but it's a very small, minute amount. And then, once it's established, it should be grant funded quite a bit. So I'm in full support of you making the decision tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard regarding the public hearing? Anyone else? Anyone else? I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
Someone.
Okay. There's a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll move right on to our regular meeting. I'll call to order, and all who can, please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, with all due respect, under God, in his soul, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. There are no additional consent or agenda calendar items. Delegation, does anyone like to speak to the board on any other item? Mr. Carlson, please go ahead and give your name and address.
Robert Carlson, 68th.
No, once you get to the microphone.
Robert Carlson, 68th Spring Glen Road. I would just like to make a comment as to the newly charges for leaf for contractors. It seems a bit unfair to the contractors. And it's something that should be brought through the board first, the Senate. But I believe if you're going to have a charge for leaves, everybody in the town should pay, not just, and based on what they're bringing in. Like you charge so much for bulky, all that, but you're really just, this specific thing they just came out with only targets the people bring in the most, but the smaller people bring in too. And they get, they pay nothing. And then you're picking up leaves in bags around the town for free. I mean, you're picking up leaves for free and you're just charging guys, I'm in business and you're going to, when you charge me, I bring them from Giant Snack and I have to pass the buck on to my Giant Snack customers. And I've already told them, in fact, one has been in, went in contact with Justin Porter and he said he adjusted it. So I believe this is unfair and I think that it should be revised. I'm not saying the town shouldn't charge people if it gets that bad, but everybody should give into the pool, depending on what, just like anything else, what they bring up there. And you should try to screen out the people that are not from town or whatever. But the way they're going about it is not the right way to do it. It's not fair to the contractors and besides, they just pass it on to their customers and my customers would have to pay something that their neighbor would get in bags for free. Or if they went up to, the way this is, if a contractor goes there from out of town from moth fill, shows up to the landfill with a, with a dump, a pickup truck, he's in for free. Or if I show up with my dumper trailer, I pay and my customers have to pay. And they could be from Giant Snack. So it's just, it's not a fair rule and I'd like to see it get revised. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson. Anyone else wish to address the board? Paul, Mr. Spakowski.
Paul Spakowski, 37th Road, Eastlime. I totally agree with Mr. Carlson here and not only do I think it's unfair, but it's, it's like a hidden tax to the people who could afford to have their yards cleaned up and hire us. And when everybody else is paying the same amount of tax, they're paying taxes just like everybody else, now we've got to throw another fee on to them, but it's nothing but a hidden tax and it is totally wrong. You know, I recycle 90% of my leaves and I only probably 10% bring up the landfill. And for the 10% I bring up there, it's only out of convenience because I'm close enough to the landfill and I don't feel it's fair for you to impose a fee on us with the boxes on a truck and a roll off and let everybody else in for free. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spakowski. Anyone else wish to address the board? Okay. Thank you. I'll just make a quick comment to regard that at the end of the meeting. Okay, next on the agenda is approval of the regular meeting minutes of November 1, 2023.
Move to approve the regular meeting minutes of November 1st, 2023 as submitted.
Sure, second.
Second.
Second is Roseanne Gotch, Bill. She beat you. Any comments or corrections? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carries unanimously. Moving on, there's no consent calendar tonight. Next item is to approve the Board of Selectmen calendar for 2024. Even though this is the last act of this board, the thing is if we waited until the first meeting of the incoming board, you have to have 30 days between the adoption of the meeting schedule and your first meeting, so, and it wouldn't make that, so that's our doing it, so. And it's, it's all in accordance with what we always have, the first and third, with just one meeting each in July and August, so.
Okay.
Is there a motion to approve?
Yeah, sure. Move to approve the Board of Selectmen 2024 meeting schedule as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dan. Any comments?
This is pretty much pro forma, which we've done for the past several years. And as regards the only one meeting in July and August, if there is an emergency that arises, we can always call for a special meeting.
Correct. This is just for the regular meeting schedule. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? It carries unanimously. Moving on, discussion and action, adoption of the ordinance establishing Youth, Family and Human Services Commission for the Town of Eastlime. Pat, are you still here? Oh, I couldn't see you behind Jerry. I appreciate your comments, but as I mentioned to you outside, we're one of four towns in the region that don't have this and we see the need for it and we have had multiple discussions about the fact that this would benefit not only our youth, but our, you know, adults and seniors. And we've gotten input from Commission on Aging and so forth like that, ensuring that there's representation across the line. So I'm perfectly comfortable moving forward with this. Any other comments?
In regards to the ordinance?
Ah, adopting the ordinance, yes.
Yes. So I'm referring to section, for number three, section A, the first paragraph, which concludes with Kevin Siri said the youth services would cover the youth from Eastlime and Salem because Salem youth go to high school. So the first part of that says Salem youth and there is no description of who would fall under the category of youth. Also, it states because Salem youth go to the high school, but it does not specify that it is only high school students who are eligible. The way I'm reading this now is that we would be responsible for any Salem youth as opposed to just those who are attending the high school. So that's my first comment and I wait and hear if anyone else has an opinion on this and then I'll continue.
Anyone else have an opinion on that topic?
Yeah, last meeting, I think I mentioned that that was one of my concerns, but it sounded like when we talked through it last week, or last meeting, that was kind of resolved. But now that you're bringing it back up and I'm rereading the sentence, it doesn't say students in our school district. So yes, a 10-year-old child from Salem, as I read this, would be eligible for services, I guess.
Well, as I read it, any youth in Salem.
I'm just picking a 10-year-old as a random age, but yes, somebody that's not in high school, but is a youth.
Yeah. So furthermore, in that same section, and Salem, because Salem youth go to the high school, but there are Salem students, high school students who attend private schools such as St. Bernard's, for example. I don't know if it's still an option for some of them to go to NFA. I don't believe that's an option any longer. So I, I would not be willing to vote on this tonight unless this was, unless this was somewhat adjusted.
How would you recommend it, Jessica, Roseanne?
I think that Salem youth who attend Eastlime High School.
I was going to say currently enrolled in the high school.
Yeah, I think that, yeah, I agree.
I agree with that.
Looking, you know, looking back at the minutes of our last meeting and Bill's comment and then looking at the language again, yeah, I think it's, it's not that you couldn't read into this that we're talking about Salem high school students, but it's not crystal clear. So I think we can, we can change the language.
Tracy, is there any problem with, Tracy, any problem in making that adjustment?
So you're looking specifically at section three?
Three A.
And, and, well, so, I think the ordinance that you have in front of you tonight does not have a 3A. I think what you're looking at is the memo that I wrote with the current Youth Services Commission.
All right.
Do you have that in front of you?
Yeah.
I know that it was in your packages last week.
So.
Maybe if I can approach and show you what I'm speaking.
Yeah, because I think my, my last, my last comment was in reference actually to section two. Is it in section two of the proposed ordinance?
Yes, that's correct. But what I was confused by was Mrs. Hardy is referencing section.
Three.
Three.
Which doesn't.
3A. But there is no 3A in the proposed ordinance in front of you. That's our old ordinance. So maybe, not old ordinance, our current ordinance. So maybe I can address Mrs. Hardy first and then I can address your concern, Ms. Santoro.
Yeah, I think, I think the concern is the same. I think Bill and myself and Ms. Hardy have the same concern.
Okay.
That we can make that language a little more precise.
Sure. And I will, I'll address that then. Section two and section three, the purpose and the duties. And in my memo to you, which was attached to this that you received in your packets of two weeks ago, the statute itself defines youth as age, from birth to the age of 18. So you're correct that it would cover Salem youth from the ages of birth to 18. And if you wanted to limit it to high school students from Salem, that would certainly be your opportunity to do that and within your discretion.
I'm perfectly comfortable if you want to adjust it to East, yeah, East, towns of Eastlime and Salem students attending the high school.
Is there any reason why anybody from Salem would attend anything other than the high school?
Not to my knowledge. They would not attend middle school or any, or a math school.
If there was any kind of.
Right. So that agreement is high school.
Okay. I was just going to say just enrolled in the Eastlime school system.
No, I mean, I think it's, the language we're concerned about, I think it's implied in section two that it's just high school students, but it isn't specifically spelled out. And to avoid any confusion, I think it would make sense to add that language there simply after the word Salem, who attend Eastlime High School. I think that verbiage would crystallize exactly what we're agreeing to.
Yeah, so like Salem students attending Eastlime High School.
And families.
So to meet the needs of the youth in the town of Eastlime and Salem students attending Eastlime High School and then the rest, can't go on.
It sounds very picky, but I think the difference between attending and enrolled in are two different things, right? So we would want to say enrolled in as opposed to attending.
That's fine, sure.
Because you're getting the whole debate about, well, they weren't in school last week, so they can't participate.
Sure, that's fine, that's fine.
Should I read it back to you how I understand your corrections?
No, no worries.
Yeah. So, the commission shall act as an advisory board to the Board of Selectmen and shall be responsible for providing outreach, community education and services to meet the, meet the youth in the town of Eastlime and Salem students enrolled in Eastlime High School and families and individuals in the town of Eastlime from youth to senior citizens.
That, that last and could, could be an as well as too, if you didn't want a million ands in there too. Just a thought.
Great. That's much better. And then, was there anything in subsection three? No.
That's the only spot I think.
That's the only spot it is.
That's what we came up with last time.
Okay.
And I think if it constrains it to Eastlime, I mean Salem students in one section, then it constrains in the rest of it.
I think, and what I don't know is why the old ordinance did include Eastlime, Salem children, youth and families, but.
Salem used to get a grant every year that they would give to us, but I don't think that, that does not occur anymore.
I see. Okay.
That's why that's probably the old one.
Would you like me to give you this, Ms. Santoro?
Yeah, or to our recording section.
Okay.
So are we keeping in and families?
For, for.
As well as.
For, for, not for Salem, but for Eastlime.
Right, that's the last part of the sentence is just on individuals, families and individuals in the town of Eastlime.
So qualifies.
From youth to senior.
Mm-hmm.
So the only, yeah, the only qualifier, if you will, as Dan just mentioned, is the high school students from Salem.
Are there concerns, Roseanne? You had some?
Yes. So the approximate cost of the first year budget is $179, $180,000 roughly. And when is this going to go into effect?
If we adopt it tonight, it would go into effect on the 27th of November.
Okay. And we haven't budgeted for this?
No, we have funds in this year's budget to cover it.
Okay. And what will Salem's input be into this?
As of right now, we, it wouldn't be anything because we're providing these services right now to Salem students in the high school and moving forward, it would, and beyond the high school students, there wouldn't be any cost because we aren't going to be including Salem in it.
So for the, I think what I'm hearing you say or what Roseanne's answer might be is that it's currently included in the Salem tuition and that in future years it would as well?
That I can guarantee you, it's included in the Salem tuition, but I would imagine it's probably referenced in that because that's where some of the services are contained for people with special needs and so forth. They do pay a different cost for that.
But this is a new service which was not included in their budget and I do not think it's right for the Eastlime taxpayer to have to bear the full cost of this as the initial cost is $180,000, but I would suspect that it would continue to rise as every, in price as everything does. And I feel that Salem should make a contribution to this as this was not part of their initial tuition costs. So, just a thought about that agreement. I don't, I've, I attended a meeting last year. Yes, go ahead, yeah, go ahead.
I just want to speak on the grant. Salem does give us their funding for the local prevention council grant. So the grant that we get through CERAC is supposed to cover Eastlime youth and Salem youth.
Okay.
So that answers that.
I think that would answer that question then, Roseanne.
I think so.
And I don't know if there's anything else in the calculation that I've seen Mariana Stephens do, which is kind of like wizardry about the, in calculating that, that tuition. And I don't know if there's anything else, there's another specific component.
The tuition is the whole child.
Yeah. Okay, so, but that, that's something, also that would be covered, no matter what we think here and what we want to recommend, that still has to be covered under that agreement, I would think, you know, you know, if, if there's to be a change. But good news that that grant is received by Salem is utilized by us. But that is something to look at, you know, for Board of Education in the future going forward, there are provisions in that, in that agreement for, let's say, sharing of capital expenditures and other, other clauses. So there may be a need to reevaluate the base formula in some way, but that's, that's a conversation that can happen administratively, I think. I think it affects the ordinance this evening.
Well, I agree, I mean, I think it's something for down the road that has, they have to be cognizant of and be aware of, but just to learn that grant does apply to Salem and Eastlime students and I'm hopeful that that covers most of the costs and whatever other costs that they are able to determine could, you know, it may be minimal, but could be adjusted in the agreement down the road. So I don't think the impact would be as huge as we're concerned about.
The house check range is?
Sarah?
Yeah, it's 6,417.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments regarding that? Anything?
A grant of 6,000 compared to a cost of 180,000 doesn't seem very significant to me.
Well, we don't know what resources are utilized by the Salem population either at this point. Any other comments on the agreement, on the ordinance? Any other comments? Is there a feeling that with the adjustment we've made to the Eastlime, the, under the purpose in that, we're okay to move forward with this?
I think with this year being so short with Salem, the concerns with Salem, I think are valid concerns. I think this year, since it's so short and because Salem is such a small percentage of the population of the high school, I don't remember that number, I used to know that number. I don't see it being a big impact and I think that the ordinance impact on society or the town is greater than the, whatever, $100 or $1,000 that Salem would be impacted by.
Okay.
I think it's, I think it's a very small number and I think we have the budget to cover it. And I think in future years, the budget needs to address it better and, and maybe that goes into the tuition calculation with Salem, but I think, I think we've identified the need for future years to, to identify or address it.
Okay. Other comments?
I would, I agree with Bill that I think the, the benefit to, to our citizens and the children, society in general here outweighs the incremental costs that we might suffer until we run through the next budget cycle. So I would still favor it going forward with it.
Okay. Roseanne, any last comments?
No.
Ann, Chikala?
Yeah, I was just saying that in the hearing, I think that mental health, especially after COVID, is critical need and that the amount that we would have to put out to afford this is minimal compared to, I think that the help that we need and that can be done. So I would agree on that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, ready for resolution?
Sure. Let's see. Find my little, there we go. All right. Move the following. This is the Youth and Family Human Services Ordinance. Resolve to repeal ordinance section 31.10 entitled Youth Services Commission and enact the ordinance entitled Ordinance Establishing a Youth, Family and Human Services Commission, presented at the public hearing before the Board of Selectmen on November 15th, 2023. The effective date of the ordinance shall be 10 days after the publication of the notice of its adoption.
Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Bill. Any last comments? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Abstain.
One abstention. Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much for all the people, all the work you've done in getting this to this point too. We definitely identified the need and now that we have the ability to have this agency, we can start applying for the grants and so forth that we are not able to apply right now. You know, as we talked in the past, there's hundreds of thousands of dollars that we cannot even apply for now because we do not have the human services department. And now we'll be able to have that. And, you know, as we know, Lime gets, you know, almost 400,000 plus in that type of thing and that's a much smaller town than us. So, thank you, Sarah. Thank you, everyone else for coming out and getting this ready for a presentation. Looking forward to a new, the new department moving forward. Thank you. Ex officio. Bill, anything for us?
I did not make it to planning last night. There was no public, there was no building commission, so, no, I do not.
Okay. Ann?
This, this?
You, we'll go up there.
All right. Yeah, I had, I had three ex officio meetings. The first was November 6th, Monday, November 6th. It was Board of Education. A number of things happened at that meeting, although it was kept relatively short. Kristin Amoroff, who is the, the Eastlime Middle School math coach, received the middle school Viking Valor Award for teaching, so that was pretty wonderful. Students from the Leaders Club were in attendance from the middle school and it was really a nice opportunity for them to, you know, to participate in the Board of Education meeting and to talk about what they do and to get other students hopefully interested in the kind of work that they do. The Administrators Association contract for 24 through June 30th of '27 was approved by the Board of Education. I'm sorry, I don't have those details, it's just that was the, the formal approval the night that I attended that meeting. A really interesting food service update, a great discussion by, led by Chris Urban and Ashley Meek, who's new former Eastlime student, about healthy food choices and a lot of initiatives that are going on. Ashley's actually a registered dietitian, so I think all her expertise will certainly help out. Monday, this past Monday evening, I attended the Commission on Aging meeting where the conceptual plans for the community center, the very early of these, were shared, a small, medium and large plan. Actually, I have a copy for you, Roseanne. Roseanne was away, so I attended that meeting and they looked very interesting. There's be more discussion about that. Kristin, you led that meeting and all looks exciting. I guess we just need the price tags. We have the square footage, but we need the price tag even if by square footage, so that's great. $5,000 grant that Kristin secured for the town through AARP, correct, not ARPA, but AARP, which will go, some of which will go towards a permanent tea and coffee station, which is great. And then, not so good news, but the state. which is great, and then, not so good news, but the state renters rebate that comes to our citizens, 2% less for the, for the 2022 year, so that's not a good thing, but let's hope that doesn't keep trending in that direction. I also, the same night, had a, I was busy, been busy the last week plus, I would say, Board of Trustees of the library had their meeting, it was a very, a longer meeting for them, a lot of substantive issues discussed. Tara Borden, the associate director, is leaving for a position in New York as a director, a library director, so she will be missed by the board for sure, and the library community. Lisa Timothy, the director, provided, she usually does, an early draft of her budget with a suggested, this is for '24, '25, suggested 3.2% increase. Importantly, connected to the conceptual plans that have come through, Lisa is putting together a strategic plan committee that the library periodically does, and that's really important because that will allow the library to apply for significant funding from the state for any construction, so up to $2 million. So it's very important that that strategic plan committee be in place, start their work, and, you know, kind of coincide with this other, with the, with the plans for renovations of community center. And otherwise, bylaws of the, of the Board of Trustees have, are being amended to include a number of things, one of which stood out to me, which is for public delegations. They never have them usually, but they've actually put together a nice little provision on that, and that'll be posted on the website. So that's it for me, and I'd still have a meeting next week.
Okay, Dan?
I don't have any ex officio reports.
Okay, Roseanne?
Thanks to Ann for covering for the Commission on Aging for me, and zoning commission is canceled, their meeting is canceled for tomorrow night, I don't know why, but other than that, I have no report.
Okay, thank you. Just moving on really quickly, for first selectment report, going along with heating assistance, we were made at the council government today that there's still a lot of work to need to be done getting funding for those in need of heating assistance this winter. Normally, it's been, the funds have been released by now, been identified, that has not been the case, as of right now, that's one of the things they're trying to expedite because weather's getting colder, people are in need. Outside of that, really not much else, is to congratulate Dan, our first selectman-elect.
Thank you.
So, Dan, so, moving on, Dan's been very busy this week with lots of turnover and lots of briefings and so forth like that, so been busy, and, you know, just on behalf of myself, since this will be the last time I've been in a meeting for, you know, for the last 26 years, it's been an honor and privilege to serve the town of East Lime, and, you know, like when people come up and comment and stuff like that, it's, I've met some wonderful people and forged a whole bunch of relationships over, that'll last the rest of my life, I'm sure, here in the community, and this is without question a remarkable town, and I'm excited about to see what the future has in store for it. It's not any individual that makes the town a great place in which to live, it's the people that live here and call it home. The town has been very good to my family and me. It's been my home for the last 39 years, and it'll be my home to the end, so my sincerest thanks, thanks for the support over the last 26 years and for allowing me the honor of serving in the greatest town in the country, and God bless East Lime, that's all I have to say. Regarding the comments made at the beginning, Paul, he's coming in to meet with me Monday, would you like to join at 4:30? We're gonna have a, we're gonna meet in my office, and we'll address this and try to make, come up with a resolution for you to address your concerns. So you're welcome, 4:30 on Monday. Mr. Carlson, come in, you're welcome to come in with him. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comment? I should have asked if there was any comment before any other public comment.
Yes, I'd just like to comment that in my numerous years of serving on the Board of Selectmen, I think that this current board is one of the best that I've served with. We've worked collaboratively, and party differences have not mattered, and I think that we've accomplished a lot, so I'm grateful to have been a part of that.
Thank you, Roseanne. Any other comments?
I would, I go Roseanne's comments, and also say that it's, it's been a pleasure to work with you, Kevin.
Thank you.
And, and the other members of the board. We have had a wonderful board, and we have worked very hard and together, and I think, I think the public appreciates that, and thank you for your guidance, and especially in the last few days, having me to become worthy and knowledgeable enough to take over. You've made some great accomplishments in two years, and I hope people are aware of just how hard you worked, and you, and you did, and we saw it, and so thank you, Kevin.
Thank you. Thank you very much. If there are no other comments?
I do.
Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry, I.
Just wanna, this is my last Board of Selectmen meeting, but not my last meeting, I have a short-term rental meeting next week, so it kind of doesn't end for me, but, which is fine, it's all enjoyable. Just want to thank you, Kevin, it was great working with you, being deputy for Selectmen, I enjoyed that role very much, and this board, Ann there, and Bill, and Dan, and Roseanne, thanks so much. It was, it was a pleasure and always a privilege to serve, and I wish everyone, you know, good luck in the next chapter.
Thank you, and thank you all for your support and everything over the next years. Ann, anything?
Yeah, I'd like to say that, you know, I really want to thank all of you on the board for all the things you've done for, and I love working with you, the ARPA committee, this stuff committee, and just, you know, working collaboratively with everybody, and Kevin, it was an honor and privilege to serve underneath, so thank you.
Thank you. If, if there are no other comments, normally the chair does not make a motion, but I am going to make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded, we are, all is in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
All right.
That's the first time I've ever used a gavel in all my ears, so, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Kevin.